May eighth, two thousand twelve. A special meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law. Notice that this special meeting of the governing body will take the record and review news on several websites and filed as well of the year. Councilmember Throby?
Here.
Carrick?
Here.
Goodman?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Deliana?
Yes.
Sam Janz, here with Mayor Kelly.
Here. The purpose of this meeting tonight is for a proposed resolution which I shall remit, whereas the borough of Dumont is in the process of carrying the two thousand and twelve budget, and whereas there exists a budgetary shortfall of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and whereas all Dumont departments have, over the past few years, made voluntary concessions to the central police department, and whereas Dumont has determined that it can reduce its police force, the government can help the local service through residents, and whereas NJSA forty-eight fourteen dash one forty-three, government's a misapparent determination to decrease the number of registered officers of the police department, and whereas NJSA forty-eight fourteen dash one forty-three requires that services of any police officer is terminated, such termination shall be in the course order of their appointment. Now therefore be resolved by a thorough review pursuant to NJSA forty-eight fourteen dash one forty-three, the governing body for reasons of economy hereby decrease the number of members of the police department by two, and be it further resolved that the services of Dumont police officers Eric R. Abrahamson and Richard Crerier are hereby terminated, which termination shall take effect upon completion of negotiations with the PBA regarding its implementation. Be it further resolved that Dumont police officers Eric R. Abrahamson and Richard Crerier are hereby placed on special appointment list pursuant to NJSA forty-eight fourteen dash one forty-three. This is a public meeting pursuant to license offices that were sent to your officers to request that this be a public hearing. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone that would like to claim their speed, please move to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
So Officer Eric Abrahamson, Dumont Police Department. My first question is for Mayor Kelly. Mayor Kelly, did you authorize these license offices?
Yes.
So the authorization came through. Okay. The second would be, we had a meeting, not that day, but maybe last one, issues all discussed. At that point in time, you know, the notices that went out before, then that meeting was cancelled due to being none of councilmembers present. Within twenty-four hours, they changed to two. I received the answer of there was a vote taken, and then what was taken in California. I just wondered, what were the results of that vote?
I did not take a vote on the votes.
Our last discussion when I was here, I believe it was Councilman Carrick, said there was a vote in California, the change from four to two. Am I incorrect?
Yes.
Am I incorrect? Okay, so there was no change from, there was no reason for change from four to two? There was no vote taken on that in California?
There was no discussion, there was confusion as to the amount of police officers that were going to be sent license offices.
Okay.
What were originally sent out, and discussion that we had was that two would be sent out.
Right, well, what was the basis of that discussion? How did it go from four to two? What was your justification for changing it from four officers to two officers?
As the labor attorney, I'm just gonna, you know, tell American, you know, lives of American council, they don't, they can't discuss what happened in executive session. Whenever discussions occur in executive session, they can't, they're not able to discuss because it's personal, it is a personal matter, so.
Right, but they're in a time.
And the right, I reckon the license notice, just by law, license notices don't have, the license notices don't have to be authorized by, I mean, they, it's not to be authorized by one other, they don't tell you to do it. They don't have to take your vote, send you out license notice.
Okay, that's why I just said, well, Mayor Kelly, you know, he authorized, you know, the vote.
He does have the authority to authorize the license. The administrative, the administrative department can do it. And if there's a belief that there's gonna be a discussion regarding any employee or referrals, anything that will affect any employee at all, in terms of their, you know, salary or benefits, et cetera, then that has, they have to give the license officer the opportunity to be heard.
Right, so we were given, we were given a notice, and then we were advised it was cancelled. So then, like I said, within twenty-four hours, we're receiving a second notice. Okay, so what you're just telling me, there was discussion on my jobs, in time when it went from four to two, there was a discussion that took place, even though we did send our letter back to the attorney requesting that any, you know, any discussions that would take place would take place in a public meeting, and that never took place, and it went from four to two without, you know, obviously being notified.
I don't know, Paul, I think, I think what, my recollection of what happened was that there was a, a request to discuss reduction of force in the police department. The number of officers that were, had considered were a little set number, and then at some point, they were saying that maybe they would consider less, less officers. I don't know that there was a discussion, not, not that I participated in that discussion.
So, so the number just went from four to two, just like that?
So I, I sent the license notice out, and I'm told to send out.
Okay. I just wanna know, how much does it cost to count, to actually have a license notice sent out?
You can over, for the legal website, yeah, I mean, that was.
You don't know how much it costs to, if you're the one sending it, I'm sure you know how much, how much it costs.
Actually, the license notice is a form that I have in my office, you're asking how much it costs to produce the form and send it out?
Right, for each officer to receive a license notice, how much do you bill the county in order to send the license notice out?
I'm sure, you know, they're not done with the break. No, that's not done with the break now.
Right, so within the last month and a half, I mean, we received, Officer Crerier received three, Officer Vasanti, and Officer Cortano received one as well the first time. So that's, what, three, six, it was eight license notices, I'm sure that cost the borough something, and if you're there today, like I said, it's eight license notices. So I'm curious, how much the borough actually spent sending out these license notices?
I haven't seen the bill yet, so I can't.
Okay. One other question I have is, you know, the last time I was here, a couple of councilmembers made concessions. Councilwoman Chancy, will you give back her, her benefits? Thank you very much. Councilman Stoljar, I think about his, his pay for the year, she receives as councilman, and later on, if his return on council vote will be there. I appreciate that, thank you. Are there currently any other members of the council that receive benefits?
I don't, and the money that I collect, the two thousand dollars a year, I give to a person at town who's in debt for the year.
Okay, so that's, no, Councilman Carrick, no, Councilman Chancy. No, Councilman Stoljar.
I am here.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Crerier?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how much, how much should that benefits cost for, per individual? How much does that cost?
I believe it depends on the coverage that they receive.
Okay, do they, do they receive the same coverage as a normal employee? I'm just, I'm just curious.
I don't know that.
You don't know? Okay, 'cause I know as a normal employee, we have to pay a percentage of our medical benefits. What's the percentage that they're counting?
They don't pay.
So they, so they don't pay for medical benefits?
No.
Okay.
I think it's one point five percent that they pay of their salary, which is two thousand dollars. I don't know, I don't think the benefits are really, we believe it's small point five percent of their salary.
I think you answered that question. One, one other question that, you know, just recently, our PBA was in negotiations with the American council, and then I was advised that through a vote, the negotiations were ceased. I was, I was advised that you voted three to one, three in favor of, you know, canceling the negotiations, two in favor of proceeding with the negotiations, and one, one member had abstained, that would be Councilman Throby. Could you just explain to me why, why you abstained from the vote?
I, I just chose to abstain from a matter of public perception, whether you have a member of the police force to abstain from police votes, probably for.
Okay, I know you're a member of the fire department, and you abstained from all votes regarding the fire department?
I don't sign any vouchers on fire department, or if they, I still clear that.
So you abstained from anything that has to do with the fire department?
I don't call a vote this year specifically for fire department, but I've not, I've not signed any vouchers, no files, any payment, I think, for the fire department, helping any specific agents come up the bone on.
And the same goes for being on sport, I'm not sure if you're an active member.
Yes, I'm not an active member personally.
I knew you were one, thank you. You know, I just, I, I, for me personally, I kinda wish you would've voted. I understand you have a family member here, I work, I work with it, but, you know, at no point, from my point of view, would your vote have affected your family member, and, you know, whether it was a A or an A, you know, it really could've helped me out, so, you know, that's all.
I understand that, but if I, you know, take a stand in one direction, then future votes, it gets, it gets looked down as, voted this way for this reason, and the past, I have chosen not to.
And I, I mean, I understand that, you being involved here in town, you know, and you're involved through your time as a member of council as well, there's gonna be a lot of complacency votes, and, you know, I just, you know, I, for me personally, you, you abstaining from a lot of, a lot of votes, a lot, a lot, a lot of things have to do with the police department, a lot has to do with the fire department, a lot has to do with the ambulance, or, I mean, you're gonna keep out of everything? That's, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is anyone else?
Are we doing the budget also, or just?
No, just the.
What's the, what's, I'm sorry, we're talking to you, we're talking to you. What's the actual cost, and I don't know, of the two policemen in total, benefits, salary, and?
Any of them? It's two hundred and eight thousand dollars.
So what would that be to increase the taxes to cover, like, what would it be per household to increase? I'm saying, I'm thinking if I had pennies.
Just for that half year, it would be twenty-two dollars.
So maybe forty-four dollars a year to have two police in the same town? And what do we lose, other than two bodies? Do we lose their programs, Dr. Cox, anything like that?
I don't know, what we lose, the two police officers, I don't think, so, thirty-two police officers, so, well, services will be the same.
No, no, no. Not only is the minimum wage, but is? I'm hearing, no. Does anybody have an answer to what's lost? Okay. Um, I know for myself, I've got a good career in Brown School, data has been amazing this year, and Dr. Cox has been fabulous, I think, which he is in Dr. Cox, and, so, we are losing right here, it's a big loss to the kids for forty-four dollars a year, I think that's a crime, and I think you should all be ashamed.
I think that, I think that's, I think that's percent. I think people do understand where we are and where we're going. This year, we thought that the budget was gonna have a shortfall of one point one million dollars, it ended up having a shortfall of one point seven million dollars. Next year's budget is probably gonna be somewhere in the range of two to two and a half million dollars, so it goes way beyond the forty-four dollars. Two towns over, Demerit, it's going to the county, it's not another country, it's two towns over, you, if you look at what we spoke about, our revenue's gone down five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, our expenses have gone up one point two million dollars, and our state aid is flat, so either our revenues have to be increased, our expenses have to decrease, or our state aid has to increase, and none of those seem to be occurring. So this is a systemic problem that is going on throughout the state, we're not the only county feeling it.
So since you took the budget, can I go into what you've done?
I'm just responding to your question.
No, no, I understand that, but, but in order for me to retort, I have to go into what you've said I can't go into.
Well, this is particular, this is not.
Right, I understand it, but how can I, in my own say, without going to what you have here for your budget? I mean, there's a lot of things in here, where you have, a lot of issues here, where you have, there are estimates from two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, which are very different from what you're, from what you took in. There's a lot of areas where it's been lessened, and it's not, you know, so if you wanna talk about apples and apples, then that's kind of all tied with the other.
We've worked strategically on the budget, that budget's not agreed, and.
But, you know, no, and no disrespect to you, but in the early stages, when you said that the town wouldn't, and I couldn't hear you fully, but you said that the town wouldn't feel the impact of using two police officers, like, you suspect there was a disparity there.
That's, that's your right, that is your right.
Um, and, you know, just from being, you know, are shifts here changes result of that? Are we gonna have vacancies on, you know, going to the parks, because it could be, you know, it's, for forty-four dollars a year, not knowing what the next year's gonna be, I, I don't, I don't think that's right, I think you're doing us a disservice.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, Brian Davis, in the presence of my PBA, number three seven seven, just wanted to go on there with regards to the state of the O B savings with regards to PBA not making concessions. Just as actual basis, I think my PBA would kind of, probably in the organization or department, it's probably with regards to concessions.
Brian, speak up.
Someone that is interested in the debate about what was a true concession versus what wasn't a true concession, specifically one and a half percent of our paycheck now goes directly back to the, that all set expenses per government person. In addition to that, we also have six of our tours, our tour schedule, that has reduced our cost of the borough, as far as training costs, training is now done while we're working, where applied to that, older time doesn't hurt, revenue has gone up to the borough, and some of it's proactively by the Dumont police department. Just wanted to go on back there with the last statement, that no concession was done on behalf of the borough, with the Dumont police department, is a complete mistake.
Anyone else?
Eric Abrahamson, since this is my special, Councilman Crerier, could you reiterate what you said, the, how, well, we are, because at the last meeting, you said we were sixty-two thousand dollars, now it's seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand?
No, it's seven fifty-nine, so, you haven't, because we haven't officially cut. Okay, so if you wanna talk about what the actual number that we're dealing with is, you wanna talk about sixty-three thousand with a hypothetical cut that we haven't actually done yet, that's gonna be done at the next meeting.
Okay, so that, if it's sixty-three thousand dollars, that means that the park's a hundred and seventy dollars per household, for your figures, which means that would be an increase of about forty-seven cents per day for a homeowner. I'll pay ninety-four cents a day, to keep these guys on the force and to connect my, my house, the well-built, the well-being of the town, and to save forty-four dollars a year by laying off two guys who were born, raised in Dumont, you went to school with one of them. I'm just appealing to these people at the council to really rethink what we're doing, if there is a vote tonight, because once you, once you caught, you know, the hit these guys, hey, besides not being a police officer anymore, it's tremendous, it's real tremendous, and I really think that, as one who was born and raised in Dumont, along with your Mac, Jimmy, Harry, and yourself, I really, really think that you guys, Phil, I'm sorry, and, and I'm gonna drink. But really, you really have to think about this, and I really ask you to go back and crunch the numbers again. Also, last year, when Mayor Kelly was here, there was some statements made about the police department giving back their clothing allowance, and then DPW gave it two for all days. I just did some quick numbers, Paul, you know, and DPW, I'm not sure, Mr. President, tell me a story.
Twenty.
Okay, I suppose that's twenty. So twenty-four years gave back two for all days, and I'm assuming, I took it based on maybe sixty thousand dollars a year is average pay for them, they gave back nine thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars just alone, when you asked these guys for their clothing allowance, that was twenty-four thousand dollars. How does that balance out? It seems that, I just don't understand, there's the attack on the police department, and the negotiation costs. I've negotiated contracts of all time, back and forth, attorneys, have the attorneys in residence in these negotiations? Why? You decide, ask an attorney to be present, is that? Well, I, I'm, as the police commissioner, that, I mean, I'm appealing to you that maybe you should be famous, of all the rest of the council, we need to get paid a break, and go back and maybe meet with the PBA, and see if there isn't something more that can be done, because like, again, except to save forty-four dollars a year, it just doesn't make sense to me at all. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I can just reiterate what I said previously about the budget, you know, we're up here for seventeen thousand five hundred residents. If it was up to me and we had the money, I'd give everyone a ten percent raise, and, you know, it, it would, everything would be fine, but that's not the situation that we're in, and that's not the ability that we have. Our state aid is flat, our revenues are decreasing, and our expenses are increasing, and a lot of this stuff is out of our hands, and just to reiterate what I said earlier, this isn't just Dumont where this is occurring, you know, we had a I S O, and we updated the numbers that we were gonna have about a one million dollar budget shortfall this year, it ended up being one point seven, next year, we're probably gonna be in the range of two to two and a half million dollars. This isn't a town that can support, you know, fifteen thousand dollars a household in taxes, and I totally understand the sentiment of the individuals in this room, that you can't put a price on safety, and I don't think that's what this is about, as much as it's about, we only have so much money that we have, and we have to do a cost analysis and figure out what is the best thing for the greatest number of people, utilitarianism is the greatest good for the greatest number, and I'm just going to reiterate again, you know, Demerit is two towns over, and they're going to the county, I think we're being a little myopic to think that Dumont is, you know, some completely separated entity. We don't have revenue sources, you know, we're not like a parish, where we have malls and stuff, we're, we're in a very huge barn, and, you know, we have to take to this three percent cap, and there's really no end in sight to these increases, I'm telling you, in the next five to ten years, I can totally see regionalization of police, schools, multiple services, and, you know, I'm, I'm the record saying that I don't think that's far off in the future, it's for the seven municipalities that are in Burn County, it's just not sustainable with the costs that are incurred, and this is an unfortunate time of that, and nobody up here is making the decision, other than what's for the greatest good for the town, and, you know, I've gone to schools with all of these guys, I've played sports with them, you know, I've, I've been up all night for the past few weeks thinking about this, this is horrible, nobody, you know, comes to sit on the stage to do something like this, and that they're all Dumont residents, and we're all in together, and we're just trying to deal with it, the greatest good for the greatest number, the seventeen thousand five hundred residents of the town. Is that the same?
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
This is the hardest decision, I'm sorry. This is the hardest decision, but I agree with Councilmember Rob, it's your body, any of us have had to make the vote, and I'm actually on the base, we made a decision to invest in the entire community, for lots of dollars of all the taxpayers in Dumont. The burden on the taxpayers has grown considerably in the past seven years, and that burden is not based upon, it's not based upon fact that excepting the cost of salaries and benefits of federal authorities, the largest percentage of the line item is police services, most of the other costs that present a level consistently of reasonable increase, so you would expect. There are well over a hundred homes in town that have closed in Dumont, people are hurting, out of work, can't pay their bills, want their taxes. People in, people in this town have to make sacrifices, sacrifices have to come across the board. I myself have been out of work over this last several years, and I don't have any idea how to put someone out of work, speaking for myself, I don't feel like I can say it, I do my job, people who don't understand, or achieve, that would be the last thing I can have for the taxpayers in the town. I'm sorry I had to write this down, but I have a lot to say. I joke with a lot of people in this room. I've had a very tough time just trying to cash people these two guys in face, knowing that they're twenty-something-year-old guys that are possibly gonna lose their jobs. We tried to reach a negotiation, we found it's a standstill, the numbers did not work out on either side, from the PBA to us. If one time you wanna sit down, this is all settled up, you can sit down and talk some of these numbers that we discussed, show your PBA guys what they want, but the back end of what was talked about, would be to put it back on the taxpayers in this town, and that's not right either. I don't wanna see you guys later on, and I have done some homework, there are four, five towns that all look like police officers. If there is a chance anybody needs it, who would be recommendations, I can help myself, and I can go a couple people, even from what you can touch, and I know the government's district, and those are some, nobody wants to do this, nobody at all, but when it comes down to put up here to do the right thing, for the people of the town, for seventeen thousand five hundred people, after thirty-four, you have to do the right thing, yes, I love my house, I love my house, and I don't, and I didn't walk out there, and sometimes going to like the thirty, a cop going up and down to South Street, and as far as you think, if they went on this twelve-hour shift, there was never, ever gonna be any changes, if they had dropped the number of appointments, they still would've basically manned this force, and they do do a very good job, don't get me wrong. I'm gonna ask one question, I'm gonna ask the chief this, chief, if something like this happens tonight, are you going to be able to maintain the police department and still provide the town with the protection that we all have?
Councilman, I'll tell you straight up, it's really the fairest question I've ever heard, because only time will tell, naturally, when you're asked to do the same job, plus be, something has to give. I will tell you that every member in this police department will do their best to maintain the services that the people in Dumont have, and that's the best answer.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm telling you, if you wanna get jobs, if anything does happen to us, we'll push in the right, try to push in the right directions, wait a little. Eric, I did, I knew you back thirty-four years, I can't leave off, I can't not be on the watch. I would do my savings in the last three years just so I can keep my house in bounds. I know it's like, I'm sorry, I'm not taking the time, I'm just, I'm probably out of this.
Anyone?
Uh, yes. And I don't wanna sit up here and be a martyr, but yes, I did give of my insurance, I did try to deal with, I know Eric just mentioned that, Liz, I understand what you're saying, but like Matt said, unfortunately, we have to worry with seventeen thousand people in town, and I know the board, they sort of, you know, the same thing with the budget. I, from, this is my eighth year on council, for seven years I was on the budget, I'm not on this year, I too, I'm only looking at the numbers like everyone else, and just, you know, understanding that the budget committee, and I know how hard it is to crunch the numbers, and as far as the negotiations with the police, yes, that I want them to open up again, I just want to go to get some of that, out of three meetings with them, I've only been in attendance this one, so I really can't say exactly what went wrong with negotiations, I can't say I've definitely, would make difference, but I just, I don't know what really went on with it, and I'm sorry, things have come to this, I mean, it's very sad, very sad for everybody, and it's not a negative issue, it's gonna go on, and I, that's it.
Thank you. You know, I don't think anyone is as disappointed as we are in having to come to this vote or decision, I was the one that made the motion to have an additional meeting, where maybe got the attorneys involved. Frankly, I'm disappointed in everyone in this room, to be honest with you, I'm disappointed in the council for not voting along with me, and Ellen, to have. for, for not voting along with me and Ellen to have, uh, some additional discussions. And I'm disappointed in PBA for really digging in on issues, uh, and making requests that really shouldn't have, you know, because they, I, I felt that at times, in the discussions that I've had with PBA, um, that it was, uh, a little bit of unreasonableness. Um, that being said, uh, I, I felt that, I felt pretty confident that we could bridge the gap, and we'd calm it down, and we could give you discussions, uh, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. Uh, I'm still, you know, with Brian, you're, you're president of the PBA, would, would additional, an additional meeting, uh, in your, in your opinion, would it be advantageous at this point?
I honestly think I don't think we'd be here right now.
What's that?
I don't think we would, we would have been here right now.
Okay.
I honestly think.
All right. Well, you know, I'm still, I'm, I have a very good feeling, uh, or, or, I'm totally confident that the vote is gonna disappoint a lot of people in this room based upon what I've just heard. Uh, and maybe perhaps before we take that set, you know, maybe just have one lessish discussion or meeting. Uh, I would support that, uh, but short of being able to, I just pull a rabbit out of a hat, you know, again, I don't think there's anyone as disappointed as me in, in, in where I'm at at this point.
Anyone else at council?
Yeah, I'm pleased.
Yeah, please.
No one up here wants to cut it right now, but they know to speak for themselves. Uh, we're too far with the budget, we have to cut every department, we have to cut every community, we have to cut the rep, we have to cut senior citizens, we have to cut everything. Uh, this year could be bad, makes you probably worse. Um, I disagree with Ari, I think it's unfair having more meetings, because then, uh, we have to let the police, police officers go. It ran with number one, I think it's unfair for them, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Just in response to what, um, Councilor Billy Adams said, you know, if there was ever a chance of going back into discussion, I would say it would occur right after this meeting, and sit in the room and set a conclusion, one way or the other, I mean, if it came to that, because it's enough of getting people together, and that's, that's all.
Oh. Listen, I understand the numbers, I'm on the finance committee, I don't understand who's, how much is, you know, Penny, uh, out there and I, uh, and, and maybe the landing spot is exactly the same, uh, at the end of the day, but I don't, I'll, I'll read you my motion to add one additional discussion, uh, in the next, you know, tonight, if possible. We'll sit down, have the discussion, and take the vote thereafter, if we can't reach some kind of consensus. Uh, I, I think that before we take this type of a vote, we owe it to the officers, we owe it to the PBA, or owe it to the citizens of Dumont, and we owe it to the people on this case, if they make one last declaration. But if it doesn't produce results, then it doesn't produce results.
Counselor, square it off.
Yes.
At the last PBA meeting that we had, we were given an ultimatum. We were told, if we didn't accept the last part, which would happen in two thousand and seventeen for them, that there wasn't gonna be any other deal. And you know that, that number was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, going from one point five to what the cover said would be thirty-five percent.
What, three hundred thousand? I, I.
They wanted us to take, to pick up in their last year, go from thirty-five thousand dollars, they wanted to get one point five percent of it, and the rest of the money was gonna fall upon the taxpayers. That's what was discussed, and that's what we said, that would be the deal breaker, if we didn't agree to that part.
People can change the negotiations, so.
I'm sorry?
People can change the negotiations, that's what negotiations are.
This, I'm sorry, this, this was negotiation, and we sat, and that's the negotiation we were given for last statements.
But it, it doesn't hurt to try once more.
Listen, we had four meetings.
It doesn't hurt, one more time doesn't hurt. You never know what you're gonna get, so.
We now also want our time between from budgetary circumstances. Um, so realistically, if we had a negotiation and we sat, and then the PBA met, what would be the timeframe? Because my understanding was that we wouldn't be able to get anything back in time before we would have our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a fourth question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President of the PBA, are you willing, with your PBA right now inside that room, and negotiate with us, and we won't come out of there unless we have a negotiation, because we'll vote on something somehow tonight?
You know, because of Robert's supposedly following the low awareness, there is no way that the PBA can go out on an issue tonight. The PBA committee is one of the longer.
We're willing to do it now, if you guys can get away, get your vote in tonight, stick around. We're willing to do it, Brian. Find a way around it.
We can meet tonight.
But find a way around before your attorney, see if you can get around this guy.
The only way that I can tell you is that we can meet, discuss tonight, and come to some form of agreement that we've fought to a vote on the PBA under special session.
We, we can't, Brian, we don't wanna go outside this, we went for another day, you have enough of your PBA members in here tonight?
It doesn't work out right now.
Right, we're trying to reach out.
In other words, you, you had to post tonight's meeting, correct?
I'm sorry?
You had to post tonight's meeting, right, you had to advertise tonight's meeting.
It's a negotiation.
But what I'm saying is the same rules that you fall under, you can't just say tomorrow night we, you have certain rules that you need to follow, falls under the same rules that you get.
It'll be helpful if you do it tonight, because that's the way.
We're more than willing to go into that room.
We wanna come out with a solution tonight, Brian.
The sticking point right now is for the sixteen, I mean, that's the only issue.
Right. May I tell you what I think?
I actually, well, to this.
There's a motion to propose a session.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, go into special session, I'll second that.
All right. I'll be reassessing.